So are you, are you guys?
Hi, I'm called in July 15th. Councilor Clint Ryan from Overstall, I'll advise.
Hi, I'm Agent Supply of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brandon.
Here.
Councilmember Brinker. Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
There.
Mayor Law.
Here. Uh, before we move on, council, we have a preventive session. Just prior to meeting deals, need all, uh, federal issues throughout the process of discussions of the water system. Approval of the minutes in the July first meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments? All for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflent.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Public comments and requests, comments from residents of City. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, I'm Niles Manzouras, and I'd like to make brief statement, bringing the council up to date on the three defense agreement. As of early spring, you're well aware that the property owners at the airport were severely criticized for not communicating with city manager. Shortly thereafter, we had the fence, uh, chasco that most likely cost the city, uh, several thousand dollars. Uh, but shortly thereafter, myself and Craig Care submitted a contract, of which would take effect June first, and then we were willing to sign immediately. Uh, it's now been almost six weeks since, and there has been zero communication, with anybody at all about this, not a yes, no, I didn't receive it, or we'd like to modify it. I know it was received because I hand delivered it in person to the city solicitor. In my opinion, lack of communication has never done really well resolve their problem.
We did update, we did have an updated last council meeting about where the through the fence agreement stood.
Right, uh, Mr. Manzouras, as well as, uh, Mr. Larson, and I believe Mr. Williamson. After all six parties were notified by the city solicitor that no more adjustments can be made because the agreements are being reviewed by the FAA. At their, in the BOA's request, those three, uh, did submit more edits. But again, it had already been communicated, we can't do any more edits till we hear back from the BOA and FAA. So, uh, we can't do any of those. Their edits were provided to the Bureau of Aviation. In addition to the ones that were sent, I believe it was May 15th, maybe. Um, those were the ones that were sent to the FAA at their request for their review.
We have any kind of time point on any of that?
Just asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying.
Yeah, we've been trying, uh, the bureau, we did finally hear back from someone. But we have not heard back from the FAA representatives yet. But they had, their compliance division needs to review the edits that were already requested and incorporated into G agreements, um, that the pilots had made, uh, I should say the entities, uh, because their businesses, some of them.
Correct.
So, uh, the entities that had requested edits, those have been incorporated in. So the FAA wants to review those to make sure they still feel that those agreements are compliant with what they intend.
There was no communication to myself, and I know Craig Care was representing him safely. There was no communication of that taking place to us.
I'll check with the solicitor, because that's a direct result of the solicitor saying to me, each of you were being contacted to be told that, uh, those things had to be reviewed by the FAA and BOA.
Well, there was a, a drop in communication somewhere, because we didn't receive any of that information, we're still waiting to hear a yes, no, or maybe a change.
And we're still, everybody, we're all waiting, but, but you should have been.
We're, we're still waiting for all of you to pick up your certified letters that we sent to you, uh, in May two, but those were all returned.
Just, just got married, so.
Yeah, but there's a lot, but that, but thank you, everybody deserves to be kept up to, up to date. And that's where we are.
We're good. That's a year.
But we cannot respond to your updates and requests.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can't respond to any more edits. Like the edits that you gave are after the FAA is starting to review them, we cannot make any more edits until we hear back from the FAA.
It's okay, you know, I was, I was just, we never got the word that you received it.
I'll let the solicitor know that, that what.
We're just in the dark about the whole thing. That makes sense what you're saying, but, you know, communication would have helped.
Yep, I'll check down by, the solicitor told me that he did communicate that, but never actually.
Thank you. Any other comments, President?
Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, George Watson. Uh, I'm sure all of you are aware, uh, that April propaganda made our way through our city. Um, and as a concerned citizen of this town, I just want to know, is the city taking action for the removal of these items? To prevent it in future? Is everyone aware of what I'm talking about, the white, the, the white tower, white supremacist stuff?
Uh, but I'm not aware of anything that we're doing officially on.
The police are currently investigating it. If, and I don't mean to sound flippant, but I think we all would agree, if we could find a way to, to stop vandalism before it took place, we would all be millionaires. Because that's the one thing we can't predict, but the one thing that costs the city a great deal of money. And, uh, when vandalism does happen, or any kind of, uh, kind of public nuisance crime, then the police do investigate it, the police have been in contact with people in the downtown, see if anyone has cameras, um, that may have picked up someone. So it is absolutely something that we've been working on since it was first brought to our attention over the weekend.
Has there been action towards, like, obviously, things can be missed, but has there been action towards, like, checking to ensure if the, like, things have been removed?
Uh, yes, and that's mostly been by individuals and volunteers. I personally walked around parts of Lock Haven University, uh, because I live in that neighborhood, to make sure that there weren't any, um, white supremacist stickers in that area.
And Barb and I journeyed our walk of council on Saturday, we walked all through downtown to ensure that we had caught everything that I.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know, does anyone know when this started? I'm out of the loop, I, I saw one, um, Saturday, coming back from the Woodward Township, the river. That's, um, probably over the bridge, I saw. So I kind of thought it was a joke, but it was dry. Does anyone know when they appeared?
They were first reported to the city at about 11 o'clock, um, on Friday. So that would have been the first report that the city received.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? Um. 4B, use of Hannah Park.
Servant Keeper PC is requesting the use of Hannah Park pickleball courts tomorrow evening, July 16th, from 6:30 to 9 for a team competition. Um, just a, like, employee, like, group activity, um, and I'll work with the organizer to ensure rules and regulations of the parks are adhered to. And I also spoke with the pickleball groups, they are aware of that.
You have a motion, sir. A motion, a second. Did somebody say? Okay, motion for a second, any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker. Councilmember Conflent.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Or C, use of Pittsburgh Park Tiger Den.
Uh, Living Hope Church of Lock Haven is requesting use of the Tiger Den on August 3rd from, uh, actually that is now 12 to 3, with cleanup an hour before and an hour after, um, for snacks and drinks and activities for children in the community, as well as, um, to give away school supplies. Um, and it approved our work with the organizers to ensure rules and regulations. And, and they are aware of the Oberman Build Day. Uh, I might try and get them to do an activity or something, because we still are looking for volunteers for kids' activities, so.
Let's wish us. So, a motion and a second for questions or comments on the motion. All for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflent.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Mayor Law.
Yes. And, uh, he is no longer on table. Any other questions?
I have none, your honor.
Okay, unfinished business, uh, Airport Advisory update, Council.
Uh, discussion between the representatives from the county and the Airport Advisory Subcommittee of City Council continued to go on, as they have since February of this year. If both the county and city are successful in reaching a mutually beneficial term for an agreement to sustain long-term support of operations at the airport, that plan, of course, will be publicly discussed and adopted locally by each entity. Uh, that plan, if it were to come to fruition, does also need approval from Pendop Bureau of Aviation and the Federal Aviation Administration for compliance with their, uh, rules and regulations, and both of which have those processes that have public input as part of them. So there are still plenty of opportunities for people who have an interest in the airport, they'll be able to weigh in as things continue to develop.
And I, I just want to say something here, and I'm sorry that Niles has left, because I really appreciated Niles's, uh, nice presentation, because we've had some, what I think are less than friendly, uh, exchanges amongst people, and I think ultimately, we all want something good to come out of what we're trying to accomplish here, the better use of the airport, and, um, the different type of ownership, and more satisfaction for pilots and people who are using the airport. And that comes from cooperation, and it comes from mutually understanding one another and working together, and name-calling, and, saying and doing things that are not true, do not help any of us to move forward through this process. And so I think that as far as the committee is concerned, we really are looking at this very positively as something that is going to be good for everybody in the community, and we're hoping that we can all continue to work together very positive. So, and I thought Niles was very nice tonight, Sierra, and I was really great.
Anything else? Thank you. 5B, response to City Council, County, or Filtration Authority.
This actually made its council on the day of the last council meeting, but it did not make it into packet in time, and so this is just so that it's reflected in the council agenda that you did actually receive the letter from the Filtration Authority, um, in response to the April letter that council had made the offering of turning over the administration planning and funding of the shared capital improvements to that entity.
Uh, 5C, correspondence, Castania Township.
Uh, this is kind of the ongoing adventure of Castania Township's, um, water infiltration on several properties. This is the most recent letter, was also provided to, uh, both the Express and the Record. Uh, it updates Castania on what the city, uh, most recently uncovered in an excavation after it had the third entity come and do leak detection, which also found no leaks. Uh, predominantly because, of course, that block does not have a water main on it, so a non-existent water main cannot leak. So, uh, we listen several blocks above that, as did Beach Creek, uh, authority, as did a private entity, the city hired, all found no leaks. Uh, what the city did uncover is what appears to be an abandoned stormwater system full of water, uh, that runs underneath the property. Also, above the property, uh, the owner of West Keller had mentioned in front of city council the exact location from which water was coming across the street, uh, to their property. I have included a photo of that to, uh, the Castania Township to show them that location does not have a city water infrastructure in it, and likely is some kind of stormwater infiltration, whether it's an official one that is no longer in service, or whether it's an individual property owner, but that definitely does come out there, that is not a city water leak. That is some kind of stormwater infrastructure, just like on 14 Keller itself is a stormwater infrastructure, which is on page one. You can see that excavated. Uh, Castania Township's road crew was, uh, immediately informed of this discovery, and we did ask Castania to keep us in the loop, so that we can keep our customers into the loop as to what Castania discovers about how extensive this, uh, old stormwater infrastructure may be causing the damage over there, because it is not from city infrastructure.
So that is not cities.
No.
It's not.
Any other unfinished business?
I have none, your honor.
Any new business? 6A, approval of commercial loans in the Sea of Lock Haven. Lock Haven Leaks.
Hey, everyone, I have, um, two loans for conditional approval, um, for our commercial loan program. Um, the committee meets on Thursday, because of the gap within council meetings, uh, we're just doing conditional approval um, ahead of those meetings, so the bars have to wait until August to close our loans. Um, the first is Luxon Lease, this is a loan request of $30,000, turned over five years at a 3% interest rate. Um, again, the committee will consider it at their July 18th meeting, Thursday, but it has a high, um, well, 10 percentage of around 70%. Um, the approval includes a first lien position, a VCC filing, all equipment, inventory, uh, as collateral to secure the loan, so it is secured, uh, the committee has enough funds to, um, approve the loan, so I'm just looking for council's conditional approval.
I have a motion and a second, any questions, comments?
Uh, we where's Luxon Lease, what, going to be located?
Um, is a new business, they, I believe they're looking at, um, I'm going to call the Flatiron Building where the delivery taxi is, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflent.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Okay, uh, Two Meadens.
Another loan application is from Two Meadens LLC, uh, this is an existing business, requesting loan amount of $28,000, turned over three years at a 3% interest rate. Uh, we're, again, asking for conditional approval, uh, the approval would include a first lien position, a VCC filing again, or equipment and inventory to secure the loan. Um, they're asking equipment, inventory, and refinancing, um, and Ali is here.
Hello, everyone, just really quick, we're looking for funding to refinance from our expansion that we had earlier this year, as well as, we want to finish renovating our bathroom, so we can start offering our bread, because we've been getting our restrooms together, and we're ready to start offering bread available commercially.
Great.
I'm going to approval, yeah.
I have a motion.
I will second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments on the motion? All for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflent.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, thank you for giving your blessing, your students, appreciate it. Uh, 6B, consideration of Resolution number 2024-22.
This is the renewal of a resolution earlier this year to close a portion of Sarah's Alley for, um, the use by the adjoining business of Stella A's or sidewalk seating, well, I should say cafe seating. So if council chooses to extend it, it would go through October 31st.
Do I have a motion to do?
So move.
So, and motion and a second. Any further comments? All for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conflent.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. 6C, Powell Restoration of Veterans Bridge.
This is a very nice volunteer project, uh, that John Powell did. Uh, John Powell, who owns Powell Metal Polishing, reached out to representatives of Pendop, the county, and the city. Uh, the 1986 plaque noting that the bridge on Jade Street, um, is Veterans Bridge, uh, is on a small marker very near the entrance to the amphitheater. And, uh, he volunteered to do some work and do a cleanup of that, remove some of the graffiti that was on it. And with the help of W&amp;W Paint Shop, uh, who provided some clear coat, if you go by, you can definitely see it's, uh, like, it was the day it was put in, it looks very nice, it was very kind of, of him to do that.
Really nice.
Thank you to him for doing that. Um, 6D, Chief Ricker.
This one's hard for me, because, uh, I have to call Patrolman Brad Colder, Sergeant Brad Coder, um, and Patrolman Brad Coder in the same sentence, but Army Sergeant Brad Coder nominated Chief of Police, uh, Matthew Ricker for the Patriot Award, and so, um, Chief Ricker will be provided that award by Sergeant Brad Coder himself, who is a patrol officer for the city of Lock Haven, and a member of the Army National Guard, 112 Infantry Regiment, Striker Brigade Combat Team. And so it was very kind of Coder to do that, and, uh, the date of the presentation has been changed a little bit from what's on there, but, uh, very nice and a great recognition. Um, we're incredibly blessed to have Coder as one of, um, not only the members of our force, but an active reservist as well.
Will you tell us when the event's going to be?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, any else on that? Yes. Anything else under due due?
An apology to Mr. Brinker for my tone when I said no, um. The wa, the water leak in Castania is what is frustrating, not, not your question. So I apologize, because it sounds like I was flippant about your question, I didn't mean that. It's just, um, it's been a very long, ongoing process, we've done significant investigations, spent significant number of hours. Um, and every time that we are told that we can't be right with the evidence that we have, we go and gather more evidence, and they're told we're still not right, so we gather more evidence. But at some point, um, it was nice to actually do some excavation and find what may very well be the culprit. So I am hopeful that Castania can get to the bottom of that, because it's in the best interest of the property owners that are in that area.
Anything else under new business?
I have none, your honor.
FYI reports. For operators.
You know, somebody else wants an apology, I figured.
Um. Anything else ready for council to do?
On the old dam project, I know we're tired of seeing photos, but I assume that with the exception of the tower, it's been turned over, back over to city operations.
Yes.
Okay.
So we are, we are probably going to see a replanting, which is actually, um, you know, it's obviously, um, not hand-planted, it is, um, yeah, what's that called, where you spray on the grass?
Hydroseed.
Hydroseed. Thank you, city planner. So, um, it was also hydroseeded during the 90s, and when we went up, some of the areas that had started to grow had already burned out, but they are responsible for a year for that, so they'll be back in September. Um, anybody who's listening at home, where do you go, Brian? We will be back in September to reseed the areas that didn't take a year long to. Um, anybody who's listening that is waiting for us to see September is your month, because that's probably the best that we're going to get, the earliest we'll get, to get the grass to actually stick and grow. Uh, but it is an incredible view, um, that the photos offer of the area, because you really can only get it, um, with that aerial photography, you would not be able to see all these different elements simultaneously. So it was really great that they were able to do that, we were there for the final walkthrough, um, to visualize everything, and, uh, I can tell you that the amount of work that went into that is just phenomenal for the excavation alone, let alone the construction that was done. So Paulo, who was our contractor, did really, I think, a great job, every time we've had a concern, they've addressed it and come back and made fixes, um, both the water foreman, as far as the operations of the dam, and the, uh, public property foreman for the maintenance of the dam face itself, were present for the walkthrough, both gave some, just some, um, instructions on things, just final wrap-up that they would like to see. But, uh, Quin Dops and a Foreman has been a tremendous help throughout with, um, inspecting the work of Paulo to keep, make sure everything's being done according to specifications. So the intake tower is part of Phase Two, as well as the opening to the spillway, that's where the the reservoir itself meets the spillway, some more work will need to be done there as part of Phase Two. But operationally, um, it's back on task, and right now, we are not having to run the bypass. Um, it's still pretty, yeah, pretty steady, it hasn't really gone down, it hasn't gone up, but we haven't had to run the bypass, and you can see there is some water that has gone through the spillway and is collected in the bottom there. That's the first $5,278,000 worth of the $32 million improvement done. I wish that felt like a weight.
Anything else?
Uh, I want to invite the public, on Sunday, July 21st, Joe Sennicker will be kicking off Jogo 27 at the Summer Concert Series. So I believe they're advertising it at 6 o'clock, so get there early before the concert, and you can be a part of that kickoff. And then I know, uh, Woodward Township is hosting the block party at 5:00 AM the next day, um, where, and that's where he'll leave and start his journey, so.
For Burger View?
Yeah. Well, no, the boat launch, sorry. And that's going to be, will you be away on vacation?
Oh, the.
The following week.
Okay.
I won't be back.
You won't be back.
So.
I gotta go.
Please.
Everybody has something.
7:00 PM, Sunday, 5:00 AM, or 5:00 to 7:00. He's going to do his morning broadcast.
Right, early.
Yeah.
It's early.
There's going to be, like, pierogies and inflatable, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No bad time, right? There's no bad time, look, bro.
Sorry, I'll call some. Show up at Woodward Township. Anything else? I want to say, I don't know how many of you have gotten to the concerts this year, but this honestly is one of the best years, I think, uh, music wise, I could add. Really good bands this year, uh, it's been hot.
Ask, lots of positive comments.
Oh, yeah. The, the attendance up in the, the cement works really hot, it wasn't as high as it might have been. Boats seem to be up a little bit this year, I think.
There were a lot of people Friday night for Kate Mealkniss.
Yes. They were really good. Anything else?
Well, the next walk of council is.
August 10.
August 10.
We're going to meet at Lock Haven Township.
Bye you.
Yeah.
Great bye.
I don't want pierogies, though.
Is that a real? Do I have a mo- Do I have a motion to adjourn?